I'd make a motion that we take and approve the town board meetings for the meeting on 5/9/2018 and the special town meeting on 5/11/2018.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve abstract number 20 dated May 16, 2018, and abstract number 21 dated May 23, 2018, as listed.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Budget matters, we have none tonight.
Oh, we do.
Oh, we do. Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the budget modifications as listed, there is no amendments.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Instead of public hearing, it's a zone change. Move for the adoption, a resolution to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, June 13 at 6:30 to consider a zone change from AG agricultural to RM residential multiple for the property located at 8533 Button Road, tax map number 089 dot dash 01 dash 59 point 1.
Second.
Any board comments? We have with us our Director of Code Enforcement, Richard Hooper, and Richard, can you tell us about what we're looking at?
Yeah, Mark asked me to speak to the board about this. This is a zone change application by Mike and Carmen Sestas of Button Road, Cicero, New York. This is currently zoned, that's on the ground there, on Button Road, it's currently zoned agricultural. They're proposing a change to RM residential multiple because an Ag district does not allow two multi-unit buildings. They're proposing two buildings that look like two story houses, each building will have four apartments in it. So, again, Ag won't allow that, even with a public hearing, and if it's approved by the board, they still have to go into the planning board for site plan approval for this. On Button Road, there does exist three houses, one house down near the bottom in the green area, which is also Ag, there's a multifamily house there, it's three units, and there's a couple more right up by this parcel, there are two family units that somehow got in there over the years. It's over an acre here, 1.1 acres, they've got plenty of room for what they're proposing to do with just the two buildings. So, that's about it.
Question, will the Sestas be here to talk to address the board about their, what they want to do with that property?
The Sestas are here tonight.
Oh, they are, okay. Will wait until a public hearing, and then if the Sestas would agree to be here at the next, for that hearing to answer any questions, or let the board may have? Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, did we get a second on the motion?
No.
One second.
Yes, Conway.
Oh, Conway did, okay. Any further board comments or discussion at this time? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you. A move for the adoption of a resolution approving a reciprocal ingress egress easement between the town of Cicero and Pathfinder Bank on property located at 6200 New York State Route 31, that's our brand new police department building, and 6194 New York State Route 31, Pathfinder Bank, for a mutual access driveway from and across the current buildout, and use the current entrances and driveways for both properties. Copy of the proposed agreement has been provided to the board. This resolution authorizes the town supervisor to execute agreement in the town to equally share the necessary recording cost in an amount not to exceed $25.
Second.
Just a little background on this, we purchased, and we have Neil Germaine here tonight, our planning board attorney, but we purchased the new police department building, and I guess when they built Pathfinder Bank, we did not own that property, obviously. That was, the roofers union owned it, and they came to an agreement on an easement, but the easement was never executed or filed.
It was, great. So, there's no existing easement on the record, although they had been using that property in a manner consistent with the easement, but there's no actual easement reported or filed.
Okay, so to clean that up and to make it all legal, we're just going to go ahead and execute it. Any other comments or discussion on the easement? Did we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to appoint Veronica Becker as a full-time data collector at an hourly rate of $20 effective June 11, 2018.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to appoint the following individuals, Erica Compton in Brimley Parity as recreation tenant at Daycap at a pay rate of $11.25 per hour effective June 18, 2018.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve a title and pay rate change for the following staff member, Chelsea Delvecchio from Daycamp Arts and Crafts Coordinator at a pay rate of $11.25 per hour to Recreation Leader at a pay rate of $12.25 per hour effective June 18, 2018.
Second.
All those, any board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution pursuant to Town Law Section 27, increasing the amount of annual compensation for the two town justices from $35,542 to $47,542 effective June 1, 2018. This resolution also authorizes the supervisor and town comptroller to perform any necessary budgetary actions and to execute any necessary documents, and as the effective date is June 1, 2018, that pay increase will be prorated for 2018.
Second. Board discussion on this, just to bring everybody up to speed.
I can speak to it.
Oh, would you?
Yes. As most people here are probably aware, the Village of North Syracuse wanted to dissolve its courts. That is effective June 1 of this year. In the beginning of May, with the supervisor without a town, I attended a meeting on his behalf, basically, among the stakeholders in this, representatives of the district attorneys office, state police, the two town justices from Clay, the two town justices from Cicero, representative of the Office of Court Administration, to discuss a lot of nuances involved with this. At the time, this is the beginning of May, and the court was still in existence till the end of this month, there were 3,308 open files in the Village of North Syracuse. That's only a two-square mile of village, it's very small. Of those, the majority are traffic, and it appears at this point that 65 percent of the traffic cases are coming to Cicero. So, we're going to be getting a large share of traffic from the Village of North Syracuse. We don't have the statistics on the criminal and the civil cases, there's not a lot of civil cases anyway. The transition's going smoothly, I won't bore anybody with too many details, there's an excellent plan in place, the village is doing a lot of things to try to make it smoother. For example, there's outstanding bench warrants, obviously, you cannot have a warrant that directs police to deliver someone to court that doesn't exist. So, to avoid having to recall and reissue a bunch of them, the village is basically calling a lot of people, because a lot of people have no idea there's a warrant out, and if you call them and say, hey, if you come in, you know, we'll recall the warrant and we won't set bail on you. And so, they're doing everything they can to try to reduce the number of warrants that have to be recalled and rewritten by our judges. All the bail money they're holding, they're returning as much of it as possible, evaluating every case to see whether or not it's really necessary to have, to be holding the bail money. And really, they're doing everything they can to be excellent to do, to make this an easy transition. We have staff members from our courts and also the town of Clay courts assisting them. Thus, I can't say there's any hiccups, but thus far, it's run really well. In any case, the increased workload on our judges who were elected to be judges for the town of Cicero, not the judges for the town of Cicero and half of North Syracuse, is going to result in them being here more hours, possibly more nights per month, possibly they're here during the day a lot of times, being out of their main full-time jobs more days per month. And so, after discussions with them, discussions with other attorneys, discussions with the supervisor, we determined that this compensation increase was likely to be appropriate, obviously, it's something we can revisit as we see the impact, but the bottom line is, the scope of what they were elected to do is increase substantially. And so, we feel, I feel it's appropriate to increase the compensation accordingly.
And just to let you know, we came up with that, we came up with the numbers. As we took, we took the amount of cases that our judges see now, and we divided it by the salary that they're currently getting, and it came down to whatever the number was, and then we added the new cases that they would, we anticipate that they will be seeing based on the evidence and the facts that we have, and we feel that 47.5 is appropriate.
Right, I agree.
So, at any rate, I'm agreeing with that as well. Did we get a second on this? If we didn't, I will second it. Are there any further board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution to increase the hourly rates of the following part-time clerk positions. Gina Gabriella, Nina Haley, and Jacqueline Lebec, from the current rate of $12.24 an hour to $12.63 an hour. Lauren Anderson, from the current rate of $12 an hour to $12.50 an hour.
Second.
Board comments, I'm going to tell you where we are with this. We, we've never done this before, there's a lot of things in the town of Cicero that we've done before, but we, we had to take a look at our personnel costs, right? The town has grown, we're going to continue to grow, we've had to add some clerical, part-time clerical positions, and we have an HR director who is very good and very competent. And so, we put these ads out, and our HR director, Kathy Barney, has been putting these advertisements out on our Facebook, on our website, and I think some of them may have even gone in the local papers, and we're not getting people to apply for this job. And so, what we decided was, is we would take a look at, especially on entry-level clerical positions, well, are we competitive with what's being paid in the marketplace? We know labor is tight, right, on some of these jobs, and of course, we want people who are proficient in Microsoft Office products and electronics. And quite frankly, we're not, you know, so we have debated internally, we've had some meetings with the staff managers, and based upon the recommendation of our HR department and salary studies done in the community, we feel that this is a prudent thing to do to get people to want to work for the town of Cicero. This is just step one, and we're going to be looking at other salaries, because obviously, you know, if you're bumping the salaries of every, you know, entry-level people, there could be some, you know, on your more senior staff, and clerk two types, and office managers, and all that kind of stuff, so we're going to take a look at it all. But this, I feel, is necessary to at least get some entry-level people in here and help us out. Any other board discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions, we carry unanimously. Thank you. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution, a total fund for the following, $1,120.71 for the water service fee for the new highway garage located at 6658 New York State Route 31, Cicero, New York 13039, and $6,000 for the installation of an 8-inch service to the same location for fire protection.
Second.
Any board comments? Just so you know, on any project that happens in the town of Cicero, we do not use any kind of the approval of our fire departments, we bring the fire departments in, the chiefs, they look at the drawings, they tell us, we tell the developers where they want those hydrants to be. That's something we started two years ago, we're going to continue it. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? They're going up? Thank you.
This is regards to the water supply material bid for the new highway garage facility. Whereas, the town of Cicero board, hereafter referred to as Town Board, intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. The site package was prepared and bid in advance of the building package. In addition, bids were requested for the water supply as the quotes received exceeded $20,000, which is in excess of the procurement policy, so bid documents were issued for the water supply materials. Water supply material quotes are void. Such materials will be installed by the site contractor previously awarded the project. Whereas, the town requested bids for the water supply materials, the advertisement for bids as advertised in the official paper of the town. Two bids were received that ranged between $24,819.42 to $24,876.15. The low bidder is Core and Main, which is a reputable supplier. Whereas, a summary of the bids are attached, the materials will be delivered to the site for use in completing the site work required for the facility. Whereas, the supplier vendor will be required to enter into an agreement with the town. No payment will be made until materials are delivered to the site. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town board accept the bid for water supply and award the bid to Core and Main in the amount of $24,819.42. The town board further resolves that the supervisor be authorized to execute all contracts for water supply materials.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? Thank you.
Now, we have the storm and sanitary sewer material bid awarded for the new highway garage facility. Whereas, the town of Cicero board, hereafter referred to as the Town Board, intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero. A site package was prepared and bid in advance of the building package. In addition, bids were requested for sanitary and storm sewer piping as the quotes received exceeded $20,000, which is in excess of the procurement policy, so bid documents were issued for the sanitary and storm sewer piping materials. The quotes received are void. Such material will be installed by the site contractor previously awarded the project. Whereas, the town requested bids for sanitary and storm sewers piping materials, the advertisement for bids was advertised in the official paper of the town. Three bids were received, and the base bid ranged between $36,856.85 and $37,903.39. The alternate cost of piping materials is $2,604. The determination of the alternate selection will be decided at a later date. The low bidder is Core and Main, which is a reputable supplier. Whereas, a summary of the bids are attached, the materials will be delivered to the site for use in completing site work required for the facility. Whereas, the supplier vendor will be required to enter into the agreement with the town. No payment will be made until materials are delivered to the site. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town board accept the bid for sanitary and storm sewers piping material and award the bid to Core and Main in the amount of $36,856.85. The alternate and a cost of $2,604 will be considered at a later date and may be approved pending evaluation of total cost of the full project. The town board further resolves that the supervisor be authorized to execute all contracts for the sanitary and storm sewers material.
Second.
Any board comments? I have one. We're finally, you're finally, right after Memorial Day, we're going to begin seeing equipment and shovels and things going crazy over there on that lot. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
So, good. We're, the building is finally going to happen, these are the, we're executing the remaining contracts, things are looking really good, and the main contract for the main...
Builder series.
God, yes, will go out at the end of this week, right? Friday?
Yeah.
Friday. So, we're very excited about it, we're going to see a lot of activity now, that will be going to happen. We had a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following purchases for the highway department. $25,000 to steel sales for pipe in an assortment of lengths and diameter.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Copy of the lease. Move for the adoption of a resolution to authorize the supervisor to execute renewal of the lease agreement for the copier in the town hall lunchroom with Toshiba Business Solutions for the Toshiba E Studio 457 digital copier in the amount of $134 a month for 39 months, and this is a state contract pricing.
Second.
County, I'm sorry, it's a county, county pricing. That's history. I'm sorry, it says state. I apologize, it's county pricing. Correct the record. So, we had a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve and have the supervisor execute. All documents regarding the maintenance agreement between the town of Cicero and Poslar and Jekyll Corp., P&amp;J and mechanical contractors for preventative maintenance program covering the three furnace and air conditioner units. Agreement coverage will begin June 1, 2018, and run through May 31, 2019, for a fee of $1,300 per year payable at $325 per quarter.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Legal services. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve an expenditure of $10,000 to Hancock and Exeter Group LLP for legal services pertaining to personal matters, personnel matters.
Second. I'll leave a second to you. We've had some big legal bills up this year. We have, I'm just going to, without being able to tell you about them, we are in, we are in arbitration with our police department over a contract, I will not tell you about that, but it's plodding along, okay? And the other thing is, we have a couple of employees who are out on, they're not on disability, they're on 207C, which is, they're police officers who have been injured, one for quite some time, eight years now, and we are in front of the New York State Disability Board trying to get these officers properly moved and off our payroll, so there has been, unfortunately, lawyers cost a lot of money, and the state of New York finds ways to spend it, okay? Any other, any other comments on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to declare the old bones approximately 15 in the police department surplus for disposal and of no use to the town.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Mrs. Cosson, Earth Day updates?
Yes, I've received a nice letter from Oprah regarding Earth Day, saying that they sent a giant, gigantic thank you to the 7,185 community volunteers who took the streets and parks to clean up Earth Day weekend. The organizers, they said like you, put together 284 volunteer groups, that's awesome, for annual Earth Day cleanup. They're just saying that working together, more than 103,000 pounds of litter was collected in only one weekend. That's more than eight of the nine Good Year Glimpses without the healing. We hope, we hope that you felt a sense of accomplishment and renewal as your hard work showed visible results. I felt a strong sense of pride in our community as I drove around seeing the streets and sidewalks shining and spring cleanliness in the days following the cleanup. Earth Day happens once a year, but, just want to get out to everybody, but we don't have to wait another year to make a difference again. If you'd like to keep the momentum going, please stay tuned to our newsletter and join the mailing list, because you can clean up all year long in your community, and I just wanted to send a thank you out to everybody else who participates in that. And before I go on, I just wanted to make mention that, happy birthday, Mark!
Forty-nine today.
Yeah.
But anyway, I also want to thank Jody Rogers, our Parks and Rec Director, for rustling up a lot of young people from our canteen to help in the Earth Day cleanup, they did a great job, and a special thank you to you and to those folks. Memorial Day Parade, this is Memorial Day weekend coming up, and as always, our American Legion does a, has a memorial service at the Cicero Cemetery at 8 o'clock in the morning, I will be there, I'm sure most of you will be too. And then, they sponsor a parade that will go from the cemetery to the American Legion, and I promise you that I will be brief, but they've asked me to speak, and I think the other counselors as well, and then they have, you know, some food and whatever. An awful lot of people have given their lives for us to be here today. And not just from, you know, all of the wars, or World War II, or my dad was, you know, Korea, we all know, I met some Korean vets, and what they went through. Vietnam was close to my heart, in my age group, we've had hundreds of men and women help us and serve this country and the Middle East, and many of them are not going to be with their families this weekend, so I would encourage everyone, just to take some time out of your life to honor their families and honor their memories on Memorial Day, we hope to see you on the parade on Monday. We have a tax office update.
Some exciting things are happening in the tax office. We're starting the village collection on June 1, and in doing that, we're going to be one of the, we will be the first town to be piloting the county's new E-tax system. What it is, is it is a new software system that will cost the town no money, and it will be in use for all future collections, we can use it. It is also the program where they will cut our tax bills in half, so instead of being charged $2 per parcel for every tax bill, we will only be charged $1 per parcel, saving roughly $14,000 with that and our software costs for the town per year. We are, since we paid for our current software for the year, we're going to be posting the village in both systems to allow our office to see what additional reports need to be generated that we're used to and things like that, and be able to, you know, learn the kinks of the one system while doing both. The village is, you know, not really comparable size-wise to the number that we do here in Town and County, so it's not that much work that we're duplicating within our office to do this. So, we're going to be trying this out and seeing how we like it, and hopefully, for the 2018 Town and County, we'll be able to move forward with it. The county is moving the towns that want to use it at a slow pace, but by us coming in at the village right now and trying it out, we will be in place to just go active in this upcoming Town and County for 2019.
Good.
So, it puts us right in place.
Nicole Walsh, our tax receiver, just so you know, has done a phenomenal job. This past year, she took office, she was elected last fall, she stepped in to automate this process and make this process user-friendly for the residents, we've had great reviews so far, people are pretty happy, right?
So far.
Always looking at ways to save us additional money, so that $14,000, I think, Chris, you need trucks, right?
Well, yeah.
At this time, public input, would any, oh, yes, sir.
I just want to mention that we're looking for three more lifeguards to be able to open our beach this year. We've reached out to a lot of municipalities, we've reached out to all of the folks that are offering lifeguarding courses over the next two weeks, and we also talked with Channel 9 today, with Mark's prompting, which was a great idea, so we should be on the news tomorrow. We've, we've reached a lot of people, but we really, we need to get three more or we won't be able to open this year, so just want to let you guys know that we're trying.
One of the things we're going to do to try to help you is, when we close the meeting and we sign off on the students, okay, we also have the applications for the lifeguards, so you'll be signing those as well, thank you.
Any of your retirees, you're more than welcome to take the class, it'd be something to do. Then you're spared some.
Spare time. Would anyone like to approach the, approach the board, we'll open this up to public input? Anyone? One.
On site of Button Road. Mark, as you know, I'm a numbers guy. We just, the planning board just approved a apartment complex on Mud Mill and Lake Shore. Originally, it was said it was going to be worth maybe $34 million for in construction. We all get excited when we hear a big number like that. I'm not going to talk about the project, except I'm going to talk about the money that $34 million would give us in the town. The one thing I need to say ahead of time, the number that the county will get is a lot more than what I say, because the county also gets three-quarters of a unit for the sewer charges, about $300 an apartment, so when the whole thing is built out, they'll get a big chunk of money for that. But literally taking my own tax bill, it's the way it works, so we can be fair with that. The library gets .042 percent of the money that we, that they charge, and the county gets 49 percent, and the town gets 46.6 percent. So, all of us should keep in mind that when we are paying our tax bill, the board you see sitting up here in front is only responsible for 46.6 percent of that bill, because it really needs to be said. So, taking what I pay and divide it, it works out that the $524,000 would be raised when the final apartment complex is built out, if it's built out. It's in two phases, the first phase, only three buildings. It's in two phases, the first phase, only three buildings, the second phase is the rest out. So the library would get $22,000, the county would get $256,750 plus roughly $300 per apartment for the sewer every year. For us, it's $418 per unit that we pay as homeowners. We, the town, would get $244,184. That's when it's totally built out, and it's assuming that if it costs $34 million, they'll be assessed at $34 million. We don't know any of those facts at this point.
If I'm here, we're going to be assessed at $34 million.
The total tax bill this year, total tax, is $14,009, take the $244,000 that we would get, it's going to make a difference in our budget when it's all built out, if the budget stayed the same as it is today, of point, 1.6%. So just under 2%, and that doesn't account for any of the expenses that we would in fact incur, because there are more people, more services, stuff, more services required by the people that live in this apartment. So I just want to say that because we hear these big numbers for wanting to get our tax bill lowered. Mark, as you and I talked earlier today, we know that one of the things we've got to look at and fight for, and we all need to fight for too, is we got to look at the sales tax issue that they took away from us years ago and cost us a lot of money, and we've been trying to get ahead of that ever since that took place, so just because you see something that we're going to get $3 or $4 million in construction in our town, that doesn't mean we're going to be rich, to say the least.
I don't know if I want to comment on the tax situation or not. I've had a few meetings already, the last one I had face-to-face with the Ryan McMahon, this is going to be, this is going to be, the tax thing in the county is, in my opinion, I think it has the potential to be up. But you, you know, you elected me to represent the town of Cicero, that's why. So we'll see, but there's a lot of people with their hands out in the city, but we're just in preliminary talks about it now, so if I have, you know, we have something that I feel is good for you, or good for us, because I'm here too, then we'll go from there. Would anyone else like to address the board, thank you. No one with a tan is allowed to speak tonight?
Thank you. Well, I see a bunch of tans here, and I know this place has got it. He's got tans in the winter. I know that, he works hard to. Tumbleloo, Palm Sunday Circle. It's nice to be back after almost six months. I had an opportunity to tour the new police facility, Chief Snell showed me last week, he's very proud of the building, obviously, after what he just moved out, who wouldn't be, and you guys should be very happy where you are. It's nice to see he's got a lot of furniture that was donated by Liberty Mutual, that certainly helps cause the cost, but it looks like it's very good quality stuff, so very happy over there, I'm sure, with what he's got to look forward to. It's nice to see the new sidewalks going in, construction happening, wonderful to drive by Chick-fil-A, fantastic company, I wish they, I bet you they wish they probably had built a stand, we're very proud to have every year participate a few of us retired engineers, and we'll be doing that next week on one mile above South Bay Road from Thompson and 31. The other thing I want to comment on is June 1, the new tax system, you perked my ears when you said you're going to cut our tax bills in half, because I think my assessment went up 11%, I need all that. Okay?
It's just the printing costs.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, we're going to work on cutting everybody's taxes in half too. The last thing I'll say is, I have an opportunity to get healthy, blessed every day, get my exercise workout, bike every day, I'm going to apply for a lifeguard job, I, I don't know if I can get in and out of that chair or not, but as long as I get in there every after noon, I'll be just fine.
You're on, I can use your hard time.
Anyone else, before we close? There being no one else, I'll make a motion to close, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your turn.
Go down, student.
Because I know her. You're welcome.